Good evening and welcome to tonight's council meeting. Before I get started, I'd like to congratulate the Kansas City Chiefs on their Super Bowl win. I'll call the meeting to order. First thing on the agenda is public forum. If there's anybody here wishing to address the council that's not on the agenda, please step forward now. And come up here to the podium and give your name and address, please, and while you're here.
My name's Alan Perkins, 303 Walnut Street here in Halsted. I'm coming here again to raise the issue of our gravel roads in town. They're not being sufficiently graded. They did grade yesterday or the day before, but they did an absolutely terrible job. They basically scraped the road and left it. And they didn't work the potholes at all. And after this big snow, I mean, they were horrible. And I mean, I have pictures, but literally directly after they got done, there was potholes in our road just one night after the other. They didn't even touch. They just literally graded over the top and left them. They've been very sparse in their times of doing it. And we've had plenty of moisture over the last several months for them to go and grade, but they haven't touched it. I mean, last time I was in here, I did the same. And not long after, they graded. And then I don't think they graded again until just the other day. So I just hope that there's maybe something we can get done about it.
What's your address?
303 Walnut Street. And I mean, they graded Walnut right by my house. They graded Third right by my house, but they drug it and that's it.
Well, that's bad. Well, and these gravel roads and gravel streets in town are, they're going to continue to be a challenge until we can get them replaced. And, you know, the, the governing body in the city in general has been pretty aggressive in the last few years to get some of those streets potentially replaced. I know there's one section that we have on our upcoming work list. As we get these complaints, why that may change the priority of that particular stretch of street. Just bear with us. The inclement weather we have had has caused some problems. I mean, at one point, we had to close our road going to the burn site just because so many people were getting stuck. Is that right, Pat? So, yeah, it's been wetter than normal, but we will definitely take heed of your comments and.
I mean, I grew up, I grew up on a gravel road and.
So did I.
They, they were, if they're worked properly, they're, they're good roads. I mean, they're just going for months at a time. And I understand in the heat of the summer and there's no rain, but there's been lots of moisture lately and, and once, so.
Well, I appreciate you bringing your concerns forward. We'll, uh, we'll see if we can get it addressed as best as we can.
Thank you.
You bet. Anybody else here wishing to address the council under public forum? If not, I will close public forum and ask for any agenda changes.
Staff have no changes to present this evening, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, next I would ask for the approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, after reviewing this consent agenda, I submit it, I would make a motion to approve it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, consent agenda stands as approved. Now we'll move on to unfinished business. And the first item under unfinished business is a distressed property at 308 Chestnut. Who's got the update on that one, Ethan?
We'll turn that over to Mr. Jantsch, I think. Uh, we were at the aspect of the last meeting. You all had asked us to get the administrative warrants, um, to perform an asbestos inspection. Since it's a commercial property and would require one under Kansas regulations, uh, prior to any sort of demolition action. Uh, I, um, Brad can update as far as where on that. I think Brad is waiting on a piece of information from me, which is how fast the, um, or the timeframe, the asbestos inspector can get in there. And I should hopefully have that information tomorrow, so.
Yeah, by way of additional information, Ethan and I spoke about this one. I'd gone ahead and prepared these and then submitted them and got those approved. But given that they were approved what amounts to about a month ago, uh, that's a little bit long in terms of a warrant that you're doing for exigent circumstances in essence. So what I'm doing is updating to a current date and talk to the court about it, uh, actually on Friday. And so I'm just going to get from Ethan, when can we get an inspector in there? And if it's within the next week, we could even use the old ones, but I'd really prefer to have them, have a current date on them. So we'll do that with that knowledge and go forward.
And as far as requested action, uh, that the city is expecting or has asked of the property owner. You all had asked for an itemized list, uh, of those 14 points that had been brought up in that structural evaluation. Uh, and a timetable to get all 14 of those addressed. And the city, and I don't believe Brad has received either, um, for as far as from their legal counsel. That lists, so we have no plans submitted for the property. It is past its timeline, um, as far as originally set. So we can pursue other options with it if they're not going to present remediation plans, I guess.
Shocker.
I did, um, do an email reminder on Friday, uh, did get a response asking, what do you need? Suggested he might want to talk with Ethan as well, but gave him the general overview of what that kind of a plan would be requiring. And I think the last email we had back on it, I sent that to you, um, indicating today that he would get a plan here. But that doesn't necessarily mean he was going to get it here by tonight, so that's where we are.
Ethan, we have, uh, three, um, printed packages here. One is the engineering report. Uh, the other one for, um, Chestnut, we've got one here for Spruce, and we've got another one for Locust. Is there any reason, or is he just, we have hard copies or?
Yeah, I believe they were just hard copies for anyone in case.
So we're not going to be.
I didn't get them in the packet.
Oh. They should have been, sorry.
Good enough. Thank you.
Well, regarding 308 Chestnut Council, anybody have any additional questions, comments regarding that particular property?
You're just going to continue working towards getting the warrants?
I'm just going to, yeah, I'll just update them as soon as Ethan knows. When someone says, yeah, I can be there on such and such a day, um, all that requires is changing the dates.
Okay.
And getting the judge's signature on the newest version.
I think we should hopefully be able to get them in pretty quick, just judging from how fast we could get them into the Townsmen. And then we kind of knew more to what to expect, so Brad can, uh, make sure the warrant sufficiently covers because they do need access to like every room. To do a thoroughness inspection if we're actually talking potential demolitions. So, uh, we would just ask that this be continued to the next meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make, uh, make a motion to continue 308 Chestnut to our next scheduled meeting.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to, uh, continue the distressed property hearing on 308 Chestnut to the next regular council meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, a motion passes. Next, we'll move on to distressed property at 603 Spruce Street.
Like 308 Chestnut, this one, the city had asked, uh, for a formal remediation plan. As the property owner, um, of 603 Spruce, since it's a residential property, had indicated, uh, they were wanting to fix up the property, bring it back into productive use. Um, we have not received that. Last meeting, uh, their legal counsel was set to be here, but then, um, canceled due to inclement weather. Uh, we assumed that they were going to come this evening, but I don't believe anyone is here and I don't know that Brad's heard.
Same thing, I sent a reminder email to council on that case on Friday and have not heard anything on that one in response.
I don't think they can blame it on the weather today.
So I guess we're kind of at the, how, how you all want to proceed of whether you want to wait to see if there's two more. Brad, I don't know what option is open to us specifically on this property.
Can they be, uh, notified with a, uh, consent or, uh, contempt?
It's not really so much contempt, it's really just us proceeding on. I mean, ultimately you can go forward with your findings based on the fact that no one's appeared.
Well, Julie spent months trying to contact, um, without response. I think we need to just keep going forward.
We've had a pretty significant investment of time in this. I, I think we just need to keep moving on it.
Do you need formal action or just consensus?
I would say, well, depending on what you'd like done in the next two weeks for our next meeting. If, since they have council, if you want me to make one more attempt, I know that sooner or later I'll reach council, I assume. Find out if there's any intent to do anything more, I'll do that. If you're like, no, I don't want to waste any more time on it, then yes, then we'd want to do.
What is your next logical step?
From my perspective, probably making contact with the council, give them the professional courtesy of, hey, we tried and you didn't get back with us. But you did send us some stuff the last time, so we gave you the benefit of the doubt, one more time and go from there.
Well, based on that, council, we should probably continue this to the next meeting and at that time take formal action if we don't get a response. What do you think?
Yes, sir. I think so. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to continue the distressed property hearing for 603 Spruce Street until next scheduled meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to, uh, move the distressed property hearing or continue the distressed property hearing on 603 Spruce to the next regular meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Now let's move on to the distressed property at 522 Locust.
522 Locust, this is, uh, the mobile home there off the corner of Sixth and Locust. Did meet with the property owner. They missed that original, um, date that they were set to come in and talk to me, but did come in, uh, last week. Uh, they were there Thursday and Friday, um, trying to clean out the property. Got recommendations as far as, uh, local contractors that could get them, you know, roll off for the property. Did explain the city's position of the mobile home needed to go. They said they're working on that and asked for a 60-day timeframe. I said I would make that request to you all, but this had been an ongoing thing and I couldn't guarantee that. But that I was under the impression if you all granted a 60-day time extension, it would probably not be extended beyond that. Since the city already is at the point where we could get a contractor and remove that ourselves.
And I mean, the property's been vacant for what, 12 years?
Yeah.
We started this process on this property, what, eight months ago, was it?
Um, yeah, September 11th of 2023, so. This was sooner, I mean, the city's been, or had a previous distressed property on this and then dropped it for some reason a few years back, so.
Is this the first time they've asked for an extension?
Um, formally, yes. I mean, as far as like actually meeting the property owner.
They've also not gotten back with us many, many times. And now that we're going to do something, now they get back with us, so I just, I say we keep going. I don't know, or 60 days, that's it.
I'd say 30 days. I throw 30 days out there.
Whatever you guys all want to do, I mean, I can.
I'd like to, um.
Frame it as a motion and we'll make it happen, George.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to, um, advise the, um, owners of the 522 Locust Street. Uh, it, uh, we'll give them 30 days to proceed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to notify the owners of 522 Locust. We will extend them 30 days to comply. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. That carries. Get you the direction you need to go in, doesn't it, Ethan?
Yeah, and just for you all, uh, that would put our next discussion on it. Since our meeting would be March 11th, it would be the March 25th meeting where we would come up and have a status update for you all. So just to manage that for you.
Well, that concludes our unfinished business. We'll move on to new business and the first item is a funding request from the Halsted Senior Center. And I believe Amy Johnson's here to address the council.
Good evening. I'm Amy Johnson. I'm the director of the Halsted Senior, Senior Center. I'm here to respectfully request the full $5,000 set aside by the city council to cover our city utilities. My board has voted to request the full amount as this is the first year that we've not had the utility waiver and are responsible for paying our city bill. We'd like to thank you all for your continued support and the generous offering of $5,000. And understand that these funds need not only be used for our utility bill. With this being our first year under the new arrangement from the city, we request the full amount in one single dispersment. We plan on utilizing these funds solely to pay our utility bill for the next 12 months. With the understanding that at the end of these 12 months, any remaining funds will be dispersed to other programs in place, mainly our congregate meal program. The meal program is not a moneymaker and we lose money each month, so securing funding in order to continue serving the Halsted community will be a constant. The program is growing and we're currently serving an average of 28 meals per day, with a large number being homebound recipients. We want to continue to strive to serve not only our senior community, but the Halsted community at large. Several of our recipients are not charged a fee, are in danger without, being without food if it weren't for our program. We will never turn away anyone for lack of payment, but our funding for non-pay recipients has been depleted. We receive no federal or state funding and solely function on donations. I'm always looking for funding opportunities and grants, so if the city has any information regarding possible funding, we'd very much appreciate the information. Our senior center strives to provide a balance of social, educational, and service-based programs to our membership and the Halsted community. With the continued support from our mayor and city council, we'll be able to continue on our mission to serve. Thank you.
Thank you, council. Anybody have any questions?
Sorry.
Thank you. With that, Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the annual donation to the Halsted Senior Center for an amount not to exceed $5,000.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, uh, for the annual donation to the Halsted Senior Center for $5,000. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. That carries, uh, thank you for what you do for this community. Next up, we have a funding request from the Halsted High School After Prom, and I believe, uh, Dominique Chudy is here for that.
Hi, I'm Dominique Chudy and I'm the student body president at Halsted High School. And I'm also a class of 2024, um, member. And as April and spring arrives, uh, we are getting ready for prom, but we are in charge of after prom. And we are looking for, um, donations. Last year, you guys gave the class of 2023, I think around $800. So I guess we are just asking for the same. This would go for inflatables, games, and prizes for, um, Halsted High School members and their guests.
Dominique, I don't think this is the first time you've been in front of.
No, it is not.
I thought I recognized your face. On another note, last year, I know one of the fundraisers for the prom was an adult prom that was hosted at the Legion. Is anybody looking at doing that again this year?
I don't think so.
I was, I was part of that. I was going to offer my services if that was. What do you say, council?
So I'm good with it?
I'd be good with 800.
I need a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve an $800 donation to the 2024 Halsted High School After Prom Committee.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to, uh, donate $800 to the Halsted High School After Prom. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. There you go.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations, have fun, be safe. Next on our agenda and our new business, we have a representative from Nysley Brothers here, uh, to talk about the Reserve a Dumpster Program. I believe that is Merle Yoder. Please step up to the podium and give us your pitch, Merle.
I hope that, I hope mine will be that easy too. So in front of you, I put a sheet, uh, with our reserve, uh, Reserve a Dumpster Program. And basically, we're trying to get away from our citywide cleanups that we've been doing forever. Where we send a bunch of guys, a bunch of trucks out on a Saturday and clean up all the city trash on the curbside everybody puts out. And so some of the reasons that we want to, that we're trying to move away from that is just, there's some, um, injury concerns and stuff like that. And also, we have to take about nine vacations a year. A trash man never has a vacation because he does his trash, if, if there's a holiday, um, he does, he gets a holiday off, but then he has to work the next Saturday. And so we're trying to get guys to go out and do city cleanups. And it's hard to get them to do that anymore. And because they don't have their, they, they rarely get Saturdays off because of that. So anyway, what, what this program is, it's taking a dumpster and we don't know how many, however many you guys needed. And they would be roving dumpsters, so we would bring them out, six-yard dumpsters. We would put them, uh, you need a dumpster for a week. And so you would call city hall and say, hey, I need a dumpster for this week. And then you would let us know. And then we would bring that dumpster out to your house for a week. And then you have that dumpster for a week and the next week we come, we dump it and we take it somewhere else. And so there are several advantages that we think for you guys. Uh, the, the big one is disposal cost. So you guys have been paying, um, on the back of your sheet, there's actually some, uh, Jordan put up some, some advantages there for you guys. Um, and actually the numbers are, I can't find it here. So in 2022, you guys paid $822 in disposal and last year you paid 931. So this disposal will be on us. We just dump it in our trash truck and take it to the landfill and we pay for the disposal. So that, that would be one advantage for you. And the year-round availability, so right now, residents have to wait a year to, if they have stuff they want to throw away. And this way, all year long, you got stuff to, you want to do a clean out of your garage, anytime during the year, you can do that. And so then also it discourages pell frine and pickers. So you guys put out by the curb and people come by and pick stuff up and maybe take it back to their house and save. It ends up just being junk in someone else's yard. And so, uh, we find that that's kind of an advantage. And also then another advantage is you guys can recommend to citizens, like, hey, you need to use this and here it is. We'll put it in front of your house for a week and clean up your yard. And so that, that's another advantage. So that's, we, we have, we're doing it about six cities so far. And so far, every one of them likes it. There's, you know, a couple of hiccups here and there, but for the most part, every, all those cities really enjoy the service. Rachel has it in Burton and, uh, it's just worked very well. And Burton, in fact, you can blame this on Burton because, um, they were having issues and so this worked out great for them and they love it.
What are the hiccups that you've seen with it?
Um, honestly, I can't really think of any, but I'm sure there are some.
What do you do with furniture, like, like, uh, what if somebody has a big couch?
Throw it in, throw it in. And, and we would continue our appliance pickup. So if you have an appliance, just call us and we do that. I think it's every, uh, every third Wednesday we would do that. So if you call our office.
Like a refrigerator or?
Yeah, yeah, any, any appliance like that.
It doesn't seem like a couch would fit in there.
Yeah.
Yep.
A couch will fit in here?
Yeah. Yeah, it, it might stick out the top, but that's okay. Our trucks will kind of work with it and push it down in there.
So you have do's and don'ts on these dumpsters. And when somebody does a don't, do you find them or any repercussions or there's any incentive for them not to do a don't?
Are you talking about the not allowed trash don'ts? Honestly, we don't care. The landfill or the transfer station may care a little bit, but I mean, put it in the dumpster and it's not that big a deal. So like if you have a roll-off, that's a dedicated roll-off and you do a project, the landfills in the transportation here is in Reno County at the end of the day is the one who controls. Because the guy that runs the landfill here, like transfer station, his wife runs the trans, the landfill there. So they're kind of, I always say, they sleep together. So what, you know, they can kind of boss people around, um, so.
He has to do what she says, we already know how that works.
We know how that goes, yeah. But, um, anyway, so yeah, other than the landfill, like if there was something in there, there, like say someone did a whole, it's not going to matter because it's going in a big trash truck. But if it's in a roll-off, then it does matter. Because then it's a dedicated load and they can say, hey, this is a whole load of C and D or something and this needs to go to the C and D. But in this here, it's going in the trash truck with all the other trash from town or wherever we're picking it up. So there are some no's, but no one's going to care. At least of all us.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Is there a limit to how many times a year somebody can request a dumpster?
We let you guys handle that. No, I mean, we, we would say no, but we would let, that's kind of a city thing. Like I'm sure, I'm sure you guys don't want a dumpster sitting out in front of someone's, uh, front of someone's house for months on end or anything like that. But if someone needed it for two weeks and you're okay with that and no one else wanted it, then yeah, we're fine with that.
Well, and if we did decide to go with this program, I think the city should encourage neighborhoods to go together.
Absolutely.
Right. Makes it easy on you and, and yeah.
Absolutely. And we, and we suggest, I think we suggested two on there, but we, we don't. If you guys said, hey, we want four, we want five, whatever you guys think. And I'd say start with a couple and once the program builds up and you think you need more, then we'll just bring them out.
So you bring the dumpsters here and we'll just keep them like at the city yard and when somebody needs them, we take them out or you take them out?
We'll take them out. We would move them with our trucks on, on, it'd be on Fridays, um, yeah, on Fridays. And so they would, there wouldn't be any sitting in that city at the city lot, although we do have one there now that people can use if they want to. And I'm not sure how you guys are working that, but, um.
Say, I don't think we're encouraging it.
Is that, what is it, is it just for the city?
Yeah.
Okay, for you guys, okay. We don't need to know about that then. But yeah, they, they would just go around town. So maybe they would sit at city, at the lot for a little bit until people get word of the program. And then they're going to be pretty booked up. And they just rove around each trash day.
Well, I can't come up with anything, any real reason to not give it a shot. I think it's reasonable. Give it a shot for a year, see what happens and if not, we can go back.
Absolutely.
I could use one now.
We all could.
And Merrill, I guess just to clarify, are you guys wanting us to then do this in lieu of our spring 2024? Citywide cleanup?
Yes.
The goal would be to eventually do that. And if you guys said, hey, it's a little late notice for that, like we want to do a, a spring cleanup this year and then give citizens, I mean, we're fine with that too.
We just tried to do that to you last year on this issue.
Yeah, but we were like, they had presented this, I think, in either late April or May. And then we were just like, it's, second weekend in June is our citywide cleanup. It's a little late to.
I, I think we're early enough where we can.
We can make it work.
Probably. Why is it, let's give it a shot.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that we make sure to start pushing out the information now of, hey, the weekend after citywide garage sales is not free for all. Like it used to be.
Right.
So.
How, how do you keep track? So is Julie going to have to have a spreadsheet or how does that work?
We, we, I mean, we would be willing to manage it, but we think it's better if you do. Just because you, I mean, you know the city and you know the people and we figured it'd be better if you just sent us an email and said, hey, on this day, put these, in these three places.
I think hopefully, um, I mean, if we find, we can gladly report that back to the council if it becomes an owner's thing for staff. But I know Heston, North Newton, and Burton, just here in Harvey County are doing this. So I don't think we hopefully would have to recreate the wheel. We could probably ask, how are you guys managing this in your office and, and take best practices.
And these are just limited to residential accounts?
Yeah.
Not commercial accounts?
Yeah, no commercial.
Large rental property owners or anybody like that?
So just consensus at this point. Is that what you're looking for?
Um, I think if we're going to actually.
Get rid of the other one.
Get rid of the spring cleanup, a formal, formal motion would be nice.
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion to do away with the spring, um, citywide cleanup. And in lieu of that, uh, put in place this program with, um, Nysley. For, uh, bins on demand, on call.
Second.
Reserve a dumpster.
Oh, I'll fix this for you. We have a motion and a second to, uh, adopt the Reserve a Dumpster Program from Nysley in lieu of, uh, spring cleanup. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. That carries unanimously.
Can I mention one more thing?
Sure.
I talked to Ethan about this today. We would like to, if you allow us, to go ahead, not, not at this moment, but in the next couple of months, maybe put, so our contract runs out at the end of this year. And we wonder if you would be willing to let us give you another proposal to maybe just not extend, but write a new agreement for the next, whatever, five, seven, 10. Um, we've done this in quite a few cities. It just helps us to plan and know what we have going forward.
Why don't we do this? Ethan, why don't you make that an item for work session, agenda item?
Okay.
And we'll, we'll address it in the future and let you know.
Okay.
Uh, we have gotten, as, as far as I'm concerned, absolute fantastic service from Nysley. And wouldn't have a big reason to change other than price at this point.
Okay. Perfect.
We can kind of keep a handle on that.
We love our relationship with you guys and we think it works out well. Has there been a lot of like recycling angst that we're not recycle, well, we are recycling, but. It's okay.
I think those that want to do it, given them the option to do it, has kept everybody happy.
Yes.
Okay. If you want to do it, there's the option.
Yeah. Well, thanks for coming in tonight, Merle.
Thank you, appreciate it very much.
We all done with that one, Ethan?
Yeah.
All right, let's move on to the AFG Regional Grant Participation. I believe Mr. Lowe is here to address this this evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. This evening I'm coming forward for our department to join in with Heston Newton and Burton Fire EMS Departments. We're doing a county-wide regional AFG application to replace cardiac monitors countywide. Our two cardiac monitors are due to have replacement in 2026. Along with your agenda item report, I do have the quote from Zoll we just got. This grant will be a 90-10 grant, not the normal 95-5 you see. Due, due to it being a regional grant, it's a 90-10 grant. I did notice I made a typo on a dollar sign on the city cost approximation. That should have been 6593, not 6513. That was a. That was a typo on my part. I feel if we can replace cardiac monitors at this price as opposed to the sixty five thousand nine hundred and twelve dollar price, we would be moving ahead. I did visit with Ethan the other day after I made this and sent this to him and sent over deputy chief Hoffman and I sat down. We were looking at adding AEDs into both of our vehicles this year. And at looking what Zoll was giving us for trade in allowance on our two cardiac monitors. If we take off the trade in off the grant, that's going to increase our portion eleven hundred dollars, which if the grant was awarded, our portion would go to seven thousand six hundred and ninety two. The eleven hundred dollars wouldn't buy one of the AEDs. These two monitors are still good. They're still being calibrated and serviced annually by Zoll when they come in. They're just getting to the point that they're not going to be held up to the frontline monitors of being bounced, moved and carried the way they are on the EMS unit. So my request to you guys, um, because we would put one cardiac monitor on mine. Doug felt that I needed one of the fully loaded ones in my vehicle. The other one would go on the rescue truck and the AED on the rescue truck would go to his vehicle. So we would like to proceed forward with joining on this grant and applying for it. It'll probably be November, December before we hear anything. But with the amounts we were talking and I visited with Ethan, we wanted to bring it to you guys and find out how you wanted us to proceed.
I'm going to show you how good my memory is because I'm glad to hear that those old units are still working well because I remember approving those at one point.
Twenty seventeen.
So my next question is going to be with these new units that you guys are looking at procuring under this grant. Did you go ahead and get them quoted out with the RTD thermocouple for the temperature that was an option on the previous cardiac monitors?
We took that off because we're finding out we're not using it.
Fair enough.
Actually, these monitors are coming in cheaper than the ones you bought because we figured out what got used, what didn't. And we reconfigured to what we were using.
What's the lifespan on the new?
Eight years.
Which is about the same with any electronic equipment.
And I, I, it basically boils down to the hardware and firmware, the software and firmware is what the starts becoming the issue and exposure to the elements and things.
Well, as I continue to age, I'd like to keep you guys some good cardiac equipment. Anybody else have any more questions on this?
With that, Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve uh, the city of Hallstead's participation in the AFG regional grant.
Second.
We have a motion in a second for the city to participate in the AFG regional grant participation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Congratulations, Andy.
Was that with or without the trade in?
I, I personally think that if all we're going to get is eleven hundred dollars out of those old units and and they can be better served.
Well, it's eleven hundred more it would cost us.
Right.
They offered eleven thousand.
If that's all we're going to get out of them, they're going to give us more service in the additional vehicles with additional coverage. Counsel, you agree with that?
Yep.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify before I contacted for the new quote.
Do you need us to modify that motion or are we good, Ethan?
Um, I guess for sake of ease, um, so we can move forward if the grant gets funded of just tagging on that. Subject to staff and if the grant gets awarded that you're approving the purchase of the equipment, that way we don't have to.
With no trade in.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve participation of the AFG, um, I went to something else already, grant and with.
No trade in of current equipment.
Right, with no trade in of current equipment. Second.
Hey, we have a motion in a second to approve participation in the AFG regional grant uh, with no trade in of existing equipment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Thank you.
Now we're good, Andy. Now let's move on to Chestnut Street Safety and Potential School Zone. You want to pretense that for us, Ethan?
Uh, yeah, this is something, um, I think most of you would remember that we talked about back in twenty twenty two. Um, just kind of establishing a school zone um, in the seventh and Chestnut area, specifically around that crosswalk. Uh, previously we'd had a, just a yellow flashing um, light above the street. Safe routes to school as far as what improvements are coming under that grant. Um, just is uh, the crosswalk itself will be straightened. Currently it kind of angles across Chestnut. Um, it will be a raised crosswalk, so they actually uh, like the asphalt or concrete will be poured to be level with the curb. Um, so it's almost like a.
Speed bump.
De facto speed bump, um, but that they found is calls more attention to the crosswalk itself. And then there will be rapid flashing beacons um, installed. So the kind you see where, you know, a student or anyone crossing the street there hits the button, starts flashing to let you know, you know, that the crosswalk is occupied. And that would have some school signage, uh, but that's going to be kind of in that immediate seventh and Chestnut area. So those would be uh, the main safety improvements coming to that um, area, I believe. Though, and I'll let council member Robinson uh, express his, his thoughts on it is talking even a larger area than just specifically seventh and Chestnut. Because everything I just mentioned is specific to that one area on Chestnut, so.
All eyes are on you, Charlie.
Hey, that's fine. There are people on particularly the six hundred block of Chestnut that have small children, really small children. And I asked two of the, two of those families in particular, if they were, if they would have a problem. If Chestnut was marked as uh, twenty mile an hour school zone or it's twenty mile an hour speed zone from fourth to tenth. Now, in terms of time, if you go from tenth to sixth at thirty and stop like you're supposed to. It takes you seven seconds less than it does at twenty. I think with the number of golf carts now that we have u- utilizing that street, we permit parking on both sides of that street. Ahead on collision, even at twenty five mile an hour, it's not like hitting a wall at fifty mile an hour because you've got inertia and force from both vehicles. But my biggest concern is for the kids. That live on that street and because of the number of cars that are parked on both sides. That we would be well advised to reduce the speed limit in that area.
So I think something, I drove by there before I came here. I think something that we could do immediately for minimal cost would be um, no parking on the west side. Like start at the fence, no parking um, up to, and then there's already no parking on the other side. But the, the sign is just horrible.
Yeah.
If we, if we put a sign on, that would, that would just clear the area out where you can at least see until we get all this done.
One lady, um, I won't say her name. She said when school's out, the kids come to that corner and turn south. It looks like uh, Wichita International Drag Raceway.
Yeah.
And you've got people who live across the street with little kids trying to get across there. It's good luck.
Yeah.
Chief Forum, do you have anything to say regarding any of this?
He's aware of this. He's aware of this.
Well, I can tell you, um, generally Sixth Street is where we're at after school. I can tell you, I have gone to Chestnut several times. I'm not there every day, however, I'd say of the dozen times I've been there running radar, I have yet to catch someone speeding after school. Generally, it's they're going between twenty five to thirty, maybe a little above. Um, but they're not going forty, fifty miles an hour down that road. And the other thing I would say is with the safe routes to school coming, I don't know how much money we want to sink into a bunch of improvements only to have to spend money to redo it. Once that is actually done, because all the improvements coming, we don't know how that's going to affect.
That's probably my biggest concern because we basically retain Lochner as an engineering firm, somebody that does traffic studies and understands this to provide those solutions for us. So we know.
We could paint a curb, put two new signs up.
Oh, I'm talking, right, I'm, I'm.
Clear that area out so it's visible. That's all I say.
Right, I'm okay, I mean, if you want to make no parking, we can keep that forever. That doesn't matter. I'm thinking more if we're going to put signs and start adding lights and signs prior to the actual safe routes to school stuff going in.
No, I, I, I don't think that's the intent. I think the intent of, of, I, I endorse that obviously, but my intent was to slow people down on Chestnut.
Right, and the addition of a school zone will, will do that. And my recommendation would be from sixth to eighth for a school zone. Obviously, just like Sixth Street where it is um, seven to eight and then three to four. Um, that property butts right up to the school and you have your crossing, school properties there. Um, I guess I'll ask Brad a couple of questions on this. Um, first, do we have the ability to just take six or seven blocks of the street and say, hey, this is now twenty? By making twenty miles bar all the way to Tenth Street? Is that something we have the option to do?
Yeah, as long as it's properly signed within the city limits based upon uh, what we're enabled to do. But the way ours is set up, in order to do that, the process is usually the, the general oversight by the police department and a recommendation to you uh, for a change. And then you make the determination as to whether you want that change or not.
I mean, that, that, that over there, at least those two blocks should be a school zone.
Absolutely, I agree from sixth to eighth. Now, from eighth to tenth, making that twenty, twenty four hours a day, I don't know that I would support that. I don't know that uh, those two blocks, if you're thinking for safety with a sidewalk going in, the children are going to be more safe from eighth street to tenth than from tenth to fourteenth. Because there's no sidewalks there if you continue straight down Chestnut. So.
Well, we.
You can always change it.
Absolutely.
Always change it back.
We know we have some issues in town and you know, that this SRS program and the grant money that's come forward as part of that program is going to be a big step in the right direction to solve these problems. Those projects should be kicking off this summer, right, Ethan?
Yeah, hopefully, I mean, currently we're on, on track to go out to bid.
But generally to change speed limits and things like that requires a traffic study. Last thing I want is to get somebody hurt. And the last thing I want to do is try to sit here and make a decision on this when it's something I don't deal with on a daily basis. I would rather leave it up to the professionals that we have retained through Lochner that's already part of our SRS program. So if it's a concern, I say, you know, we can let Ethan broach it with them to get their recommendation.
Do we need a traffic study though, just to establish a school zone? I mean, we're talking about, we're talking about.
Within so many feet of a school, we don't.
I mean, I, I think.
But I think it's the extension part that we'll have.
Yeah, I know, I, I think we need to, like, that makes sense to have a school zone on those two blocks.
Yeah, I agree with that too.
I guess no brainer.
No, the actual crosswalk itself, this is aside from what Lochner has advised, is that correct?
No, that, that's straightening the crosswalk and elevating it, it's Lochner.
Okay, good, okay.
Yeah, I say, because right now it kind of goes from the southeast, you know, and, and goes towards the driveway itself. Um, so it'll be straightened where it actually shoots back basically from the seventh and Chestnut intersection. And there's already sidewalk that gets down, um, kind of right in front of the house there on the south edge of the, of the school property. I mean, establishing no parking, I think that would be something I, yeah, we would maybe want to look and see. I mean, I'm assuming we, you would want it more timed or do you want it just permanent in front of the.
I'd say.
Schools property, we just park it as no parking.
I would recommend permanent also.
When you go, when you drive down there, it's just especially um, going south, it just gets really clustered with all these cars parked here. And it's not, it makes the crosswalk not as visible.
And you're talking right by the school exit there.
Well, and just that would improve visibility.
You know, the chain, the chain link fence.
Running out between cars.
Along Chestnut there?
Long Chestnut.
Yeah.
I'd say at least most of that should be.
No, I agree because that's where most of the kids come out there. They're either coming down Chestnut or they're coming through the back of the school, so that area.
One allows the kids to see as well, because if they're peeking over a car, you know, might be too late.
I think long term, I mean, I don't know exactly what the, the final plans, uh, but I know they were planning to address that pre-k parking area to, I would hope. Uh, someone that drops my, my get out there on a, on a quite routine basis, the, that they would uh, expand that driveway. Because that drag driveway feels very tight with two cars trying to.
Yeah.
Ingress, egress, so.
And that, that, there are plans of that in that bond as well that we want over, so.
So really, we would, I don't think be causing any future issue because I think we'd probably see, hopefully, the curb line actually diminish if that was expanded, so.
Our issue here tonight about is whether or not to establish a school zone between sixth and eighth. Would that be the motion? Yeah, I think so.
I think we could, I mean, I think if you all want to do that and Brad, I don't know. I mean, if they can just declare it, because I don't think it ever has officially been declared or talked about. I would say at least for preliminary signing, it would probably be the just school zone signing that's applicable under state law. It will just have times printed on it. We're not going to probably invest until having more conversations with, you know, Lochner on any sort of flashing light. Because I don't know how those flashing lights would interplay with the beacons.
And appropriate signage.
But I think we could get.
Or do we just have Ethan and chief put together a plan and bring it for our approval at the next meeting?
That's what I would recommend too.
That would probably be better, right? Yeah, thank you. With that then, Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to table this issue and to bring it back with some solutions to our next meeting.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to continue the Chestnut Street Safety and School Zone issue to the next regular council meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right, thank you, counsel. Next item on the agenda is a hazard mitigation plan and our notice of intent to uh, participate in that, I'm sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, basically, the, the hazard, the region G hazard mitigation plan is being updated. We just approved that uh, the formal or last update uh, back in two thousand nineteen. Uh, currently, the Kansas Department of Emergency Management has engaged a consultant to go through it. All we need this evening, uh, there was links to uh, the full plan, which is seven hundred plus pages. You know, it encompasses all of the region G. We is looking for the city indicating that Hallstead would participate in the hazard mitigation plan or basically provide notification that we uh, would intend to adopt that once it's been finalized to the point where FEMA's approved it. Uh, the big thing on this is not only on mitigation planning, but it does allow us to participate um, in those mitigation grants when they become available. Uh, and in the past, we've used these, that's how we bought the two new storm sirens. Uh, was the grant that we had received tentative approval till we find out how onerous it was going to be, you know, to do like the storm shelter in Riverside Park. Uh, that was a mitigation grant before we, we walked back on that one due to other factors. But if we don't, if the city as a jurisdiction doesn't adopt this mitigation plan, then you can't apply for that funding. And in this case, to let you all know, uh, this is not a binding action. Um, they just want the intent. And then once the full plan actually gets FEMA approved and everything like that, uh, you would be able to see the finalized plan before actually adopting a resolution that formally says that Hallstead approves and, and wants to participate. And you can kind of see there are some general, i- it tries to kind of encompass all sorts of hazards. So if any of you have direct feedback, um, I think the survey, actually Harvey County Emergency Management has a survey that's open until this Wednesday uh, to provide feedback. Or if there's something Hallstead specific you want in there that wasn't in, I tried to call out our specific pages so you weren't wading through those seven hundred pages. Let me know and we can definitely ask uh, Harvey County to make sure that those get added to the plan, so. And again, the, the things you see, if you did read through it, um, that they try and stress is it's, anything in the plan is not a mandate that the city has to do that mitigation activity. Uh, it's aspirational nature, so it's kind of saying if money was no object or if there was no other factors you might run into, what would we do to mitigate against natural or manmade disaster, so.
Well, there's no more discussion, Mr. Mayor. I'd make a motion to approve, the city manager to approve notification. Well, there's no more discussion, Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve, the city manager to approve notification to Harvey County and Hazard Mitigation Plan Consultants of Halsted, intent to adopt the Kansas Region G Hazard Mitigation Plan update.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Halsted to participate in the, uh, Hazard Mitigation Plan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that carries. Next item on our agenda is, uh, Medicare Expansion Support Resolution, I'll open that up to the council right now.
I did some more research on, on, um, this whole issue. And I, I will, I guess start by saying it's a very complex issue, I, I think that's probably understated. I found some interesting statistics through United Way, uh, and I'll just, I wanna cover them just very briefly here. They have a, it's a system of measuring your communities and, and looking at poverty and then people living above poverty in communities. And they have this United for Alice statistic, and Alice is an acronym for Asset Limited Income Constrained Employed, and I'm reading from their site here, and represents the growing number of families who are unable to afford the basics of housing, childcare, food, transportation, healthcare and technology. These workers often struggle to keep their own households from financial ruin while keeping our local communities running. A lot of these people are gonna be like truck drivers, cashiers, customer service, fast food, things like that, that they're gainfully employed, but they still, there's financial hardships there. They didn't have, they didn't drill down to Halsted itself in here, but just looking at Harvey County, they list, uh, ten percent of Harvey County in the poverty range, and then another twenty-five percent in this Alice range, so that they're employed, but their assets are limited. I mean, these are our neighbors that we're talking about. And to me, this, even though what we're talking about tonight isn't anything that has any binding, anything on anyone, I think expressing support for something that helps a lot of people, it makes sense. And so I'd be, I'd be happy to support this resolution.
Mr. Mayor, may I? I wanna read off some names, Cedarvale, Great Bend, St. Mary's, Harrington, Independence, Fort Scott, Oswego, Leavenworth, Wellington. Their hospitals closed since two thousand six. With the majority in two thousand twenty. Kansas ranks second in the nation for loss of services by the rural hospitals numbered at eighty-four. Only Texas, with a hundred and one, surpasses Kansas for loss of those services. I talked to a physician today at Newton Medical Center. Dr. Gibson, Stephanie Gibson. She actually called me back to discuss this, and she said, I'll, I'll explain it from a doctor's perspective. Yeah, people come into the emergency room, critical condition. She said, I had two in particular. Went to send them to the ICU, they had no money. Had no coverage. They couldn't afford a medication, so they can't stay in the ICU. She can tell you what the results were. This is Harvey County, Kansas. I won't tell you what she thought of the people who were trying to veto the governor's bill either, cause that's.
That's a different ballpark. So, I'm on.
You have any comments?
No, I don't.
Josh?
I think overall, the, the whole system is broken, but. This is, this is, I mean, this is a good thing.
Start.
I don't think this solves the big issue, but, um, this will definitely help some people, yeah.
Well, I think too, it's important that, just to throw out there, I mean, Fort H State did a survey on this issue earlier this year. It was a seventy percent of Kansas came out and said, this is a good thing. I, I think that holds some weight.
Same with the Fort H's survey.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve Resolution Number Two Thousand Twenty Four Dash Zero Three, a resolution of the City of Halsted, Kansas, supporting the expansion of Medicaid or Can Care in the state of Kansas.
Aye, second.
Have a motion and a second to, uh, support a resolution for Medicaid expansion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Well, counsel, it's at this point that I'm gonna exercise my right to veto this. And I'm gonna tell you why. This is a state legislator issue, and the state legislation needs to be taking it up. They've turned it into a partisan issue. They're driving their partisan politics down to this level, and I'm not gonna put up with it. So, people like Mr. Cronister that come in and give that speech, I applaud you for your efforts, but your efforts need to be driven to the state level and not here at a local level where we can't do anything about this. And I've got people on both sides of the issue here in town, and I'm not gonna have partisan politics start to have a play in our local government. So that's why I'm vetoing this. So counsel, you have an option. You have two days, and you can assemble Ms. Will, who's not present tonight. And if you can pass this unanimously, you can override my veto. And Brad can fill you in on if I'm not telling the truth here.
That's correct.
So this is where it's gonna ride tonight until you guys can pull majority or unanimous support for it.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Well, we do have one executive session on the agenda, and I would entertain the motion for that now.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, remove that the Halsted City Council recessing to executive session to discuss preliminary contract negotiation pursuant to the consultation with an attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, exception in KSA seven five four three one nine B two. And ask that in addition to the governing body, the following persons join the governing body in executive session, the city manager and city attorney. The open meeting and governing body to reconvene in the city council chambers at eight fifteen P M.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to enter into the executive session, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We'll move to the back council room, council. Both same sign. We'll move to the back council room, council.
at oncoming or incoming newly elected officials, but there's great information. Usually the hotel blocks fill up pretty quick, so to get you at the most convenient hotel location, if you are or have any interest in attending that on April 12th and 13th, please get with Julie or I so we can get you registered. Yeah, it's, it's really good. So I highly encourage anyone that hasn't ever been to Governing Body Institute or one of those to, to try and attend that if they can. And of course, the city will, will take care of putting you up. We budget for you guys to go to those. And that's all I have as far as my managers' report this evening. Financial, I keep it really simple. You know, it's beginning, beginning of the year. You have the budgeted fund summary. We keep up our trend of being in better cash position across all those funds. The general fund still up based on what we saw with carryover into the new fiscal year. I will note the library fund shows a significant overage compared to where it was last year, and that's just due to the timing of getting the library tax distribution out. So last year, we got that out at the very end of January. This year, we weren't able to get that out till February because of how some dates fell. So nothing unusual there. And then gas obviously is, is well below. Part of that's just reflected in the cost difference of gas and the other just reflecting those ongoing accelerated payments on the gas loan. So nothing, nothing new, nothing concerning. Not a lot of trends emerging yet since it is just the close of our first fiscal month. And then you have the capital equipment and the capital improvement fund balances there on your second hand out, and those are both sitting about where we would expect. So that is all this evening unless there's any specific questions.
Counsel, anybody else have anything they'd like to add this evening? If not, that does conclude our business, and I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you, counsel.